Good evening. Happy to welcome you to a very special Pasadena Area Community College District Board of Trustees meeting. And though this is one meeting, it's really kind of like three meetings in one. So, three sub-meetings within a meeting. So, to characterize the first sub-meeting, this is the official Jeffrey Baum meeting. Because this is an amazing man who served this institution and the entire state of California, but particularly this institution exceptionally well for 12 years, and he's just worth a meeting. So, we're going to have the Jeffrey Baum meeting, and so appropriately, we have asked Mr. Baum and his professional help that he will explain to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
So, I have a special helper. My daughter Amy is actually the pledge leader in her fourth grade class this year. And then Amy will actually give the directions, as she promised to do.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope that wasn't on tape.
So, I've been on the board 36 years, so I've attended, you figure the math, how many Board of Trustees meetings, and that was the best introduction and leading of the pledge in my entire tenure on the Board of Trustees. Very articulate and clear and straightforward, so excellent job, Amy, and it's a wonderful beginning to this special ceremony. So, we'd like to ask Mr. Baum to come up to our podium, and we'd like to give you a few things.
First of all, President Martin and Vice President of the Board of Governors, Jeff Baum, the Honorable Jeff Baum, I wish to formally introduce to you the Vice President of the Board of Governors, former Board of Trustees, member of the governing board of Pasadena Area Community College District, officially introduce Mr. Jeff Baum. President Martin, I'd ask you to come forward, and the Board of Trustees has several recognitions for Mr. Baum, so let me...
As Jeff was Board President before me, so no one knows exactly how I feel at this moment better than Jeff. It's like you have this feeling like, you know, you just thought this day would never get here, and you can finally pass the gavel on to somebody else and kind of get back to things. And I know he knows exactly what I'm talking about, but there's one part of this job that I'm really, really glad, and that is that I actually, you know, as we shoved this in front before we passed the gavel off, because I feel very privileged to be the one that gets to present these to Jeff Baum. We've had some amazing meetings, many in this room, in the last 12 years. There's been some of those meetings on the verge of mayhem. There's been some of those meetings on the verge of somanex. There's been heated discussions, and there's been insightful discussions. Through all of those discussions, this is a pillar of reasoning and wisdom. This is a gentleman who has stood overwhelmingly for openness and transparency. If there's one comment he's made in the last 12 years, it's put it on the web, make sure everybody has access, get it out there. Overwhelmingly, a vote for transparency in all that we do, and that legacy is going to stay with us even after you're gone. There's a voice for a passion for students, someone who, without banging a shoe on the table, but you can hear in the tone of his voice, his number-one concern is the students of this institution, followed closely by the tax-paying public, which I happen to appreciate. And through all of that is this calm, is the steadiness, this, you know, if Jeff is there, there will be some relative order to all the rumblings and things that are happening. So, it has been a privilege for me to sit on the board with you these last 12 years. Now, I'm talking a lot about the PCC side, and maybe somebody else, some of my other that get to see him in his state functions. One of the, in addition, you know, he's on the, for the entire state, and I'm representing the policy there, and somebody else may speak to that. But the other thing that I've tremendously appreciated is the amazing memory that he has. And he will sit here and say, "Well, I remember back in the meeting in August of whatever year, da-da-da, we were talking about this and that, and this happened, and this happened, and this happened." And I'm like, "Wow." You know, I get up in the morning and see, look on the bedpost, wife's name, son's name, daughter's name. Okay, I remember now." You know, so it's just incredible, and it's always the way you've been able to pull up those facts, the way you can have been able to connect that history into the present policy and the things that we're discussing today. We're going to miss you. We are really, really going to miss you. So, Jeff, we've got a few things. On behalf of the board, this is a Board of Trustees special commendation. I don't know if I'll take all the time to read that, but it basically says what I just said. And... Oh, can I get a picture, please? With a...
I hope we get one with the whole board, too.
Yeah, we will.
We have a little break coming.
Thank you.
And then I'll let you sort of have you, okay. So, this is ACCT Lifetime Membership, presented to Jeff Baum, Pasadena Area Community College District, in recognition of your service and leadership on behalf of all the community colleges.
Thank you.
Very nice. I think there's a couple trustees that would have been a better presenter on that one than me, but we're going to kind of keep this moving.
That's your official lapel pin.
Thank you.
Okay, but the goodies keep coming.
Well, we have, and Trustee Baum, because we want to make sure that when you go to Sacramento, that you are properly dressed, we ask you to open this up.
Oh, this is great. Oh, this is excellent.
And I think there's one more from the staff, right?
Yep.
We'll let Dr. Rocha's from the staff, so...
Oh, this is great. I like it. I'll wear this on New Year's Day to the Rose Parade. This is great. Thank you very much.
All right, and Vice President Baum, as a token of our esteem on part of the staff who developed this idea and the trustees who signed this, we wanted to present you with this suitable for framing, and we hope you don't mind.
This is great. At Mont Quinata, they have a Memorial Day Parade, and I rode in a Thunderbird on the back of that, and it was a special experience with the drum line from the PCC band once, and that was good. Thank you so much.
Okay, now, don't go away. Any more that we're, is there any more we can give him?
I have a few things to say.
Keys to the college, anything like that? I guess that's about it.
More than I can imagine.
We're going to let you have a few moments here to say anything you'd like to say, and then after that, don't go away.
By the way, for all of our honorees, we will be having a recess after the recognitions so that we can take photographs.
Oh, thank you so much. Well, I'm really overwhelmed to get this type of recognition, because as many of my colleagues on the board know, you don't do this for certificates or jackets or things like that. You devote countless hours of your time to actually helping students and being motivated. And the thing that they teach us in Trusteeship 101 is that no trustee does something as an individual. No trustee has any power as an individual. Trustees only have power, only have influence when they work together as a unit. And then together in that unit, of course, is the administration and the faculty and others that make this a special institution. I do, John says I have this iron trap memory, but I did take some notes, so I wouldn't forget anything. I feel like I'm at the Oscars getting all this recognition. But this, obviously, my service over the last 12 years wouldn't have been possible first and foremost. And my daughter reminded me, Amy, two nights ago, she says, "Daddy, you're going to say something about me and mommy, aren't you?" And I say, "Well, what should I say?" She said, "Well, you, when you're out on Wednesday nights, I have to take out the trash." And so, but honestly, Lisa, I started this board, we didn't have a daughter, Amy, that's as wonderful as you can imagine, but Lisa was supportive from day one, even though Lisa's traditionally somebody who doesn't necessarily like a lot of attention, she's been very in my corner from the beginning. And I promised her at each election that this would be the last time I'm going to run, and I broke that promise on a couple of occasions. And now I wanted to keep my promise, especially after that year when I was doing five different jobs professionally and others. But Lisa's really made this possible for me to do this, and I couldn't express deep enough how much that has meant to me. And Amy, of course, has always made a lot of sacrifices, and one of the reasons, as those of you who got my note saying, after a certain period of service, I also have to want to take care of my family, I mean, be more there for my family. And as Mark and others know, three and a half years ago, I took a job, a second job in addition to my job at USC. That takes me out of town a lot, and I spent a lot of time in the desert and drove back today. So, this was a time and an opportunity, I wanted to continue to fulfill my commitment and promise that I made to Lisa and to Amy, but then continue to serve, find ways to serve the district, either through the state or at the local level. There are a lot of people who were actually there at the beginning that encouraged me when I first thought about running. First, I have to mention my parents. My dad was an elected official in our local community of Seal Beach, and my mom was a longtime community college trustee. Actually, I attended my first ACCT meeting, I think when I was like 22 years old, because I, my mom came to Washington DC when I was working there, and she instilled in me a commitment to service and a belief in the community college system as the ladder that provides opportunity for everybody, no matter where you are or where you get started, you always have a shot when you get, go to a community college. So, they provided the foundation. There are a few trustees that I want to mention. Some of you in the room know them, but many of you don't. But I, when I first started thinking about it, I got a lot of encouragement and support from people like Dick Green and Walter Shafford, LB Hickambottom, Luther Renfro and Jack Scott. Those were some of the folks that, when I started thinking about it, they were the ones that said, "Hey, I think you have something to give, and we'd be willing to support you." Jeanette knows, she's actually the architect of this, and I was going to come back to Jeanette later, but it was Jeanette, man, who came and visited me in Washington DC when I was working as an executive producer at C-SPAN and had announced that I was planning to move back to California. And Jeanette and I got to know each other on the KPCC Advisory Committee when the district was deciding what to do about KPCC. And Jeanette mentioned it to me, encouraged me, guided me, and then, and has been a mentor ever since on local and state issues. One quick example of the types of ways Jeanette has been a mentor of mine was, we would go to Washington and talk about, Jeanette's been in the system for 30-some years. I would go in and we'd meet with a member of Congress or a state legislator, and we would start talking, and I tend to talk without thinking. Jeanette would be quiet and listen, and I would be saying things that ordinarily, I really didn't know what I was, I wasn't as experienced or knowledgeable. And Jeanette would actually be supportive and encouraging and be a great partner as we advocated for the system. And with that kind of support and mentorship, it made me feel able to reach to, to ask to be considered for service on the Board of Governors. And so, I do need to say something very special about Jeanette and the role she's played. Other board members from the early days who are no longer on the board but still great folks and around are Sue Mealy and Warren Weber, and even Beth Wells Miller, Connie Ray Castro, and Hillary Bradbury Wong. They're all great trustees that I had a chance to work with and learn from and partner with. The other group that I want to talk to is the administration here on campus. And nothing we could do would be possible without the support we have from the administrators, especially those who work in the board office. Mary Thompson for the last several years, Maida Holcomb, Melinda Altmetz and others have provided tremendous support and encouragement, and I really appreciate that, because it has made a big difference to me. We've had some terrific presidents of PCC that I've been able to work with. I mentioned Jack Scott earlier. Jim Kossler was the first one I worked with. We had Paul Apparumo, and then Lisa Sugimoto, who I'm really thrilled that we're able to also honor tonight, and then Mark Rocha. And we've made so much progress in the last several years, and I want to start where, I want to finish where I started, saying, "Look at what we together as a board have accomplished and celebrate what we together, working with Mark and others, have been able to accomplish and celebrate." And I want everybody on the board to share in this excitement about how far we've come. First off, not too long ago, and for most of my 12 years on this board, we were under some kind of accreditation sanction. This district is no longer, it has a clean accreditation for almost the first time in my 12 years, and that is no small task. President Rocha led the way, but it also required the help of faculty and administrators and others to address those issues. The other things I want to talk about is how we've made a difference in the lives of students together. First and foremost, you can talk about the building and the facilities here, the Creveling Lounge and the Student Center, the amazing new Center for the Arts. Talk about what great facilities we've, with the help of the taxpayers, the leadership of the administration, the support and guidance of the board, have provided that. Students at PCC have facilities that are unlike any and rival any institution, including my day employer, USC. These classrooms that are outfitted with technology, the arts studios and rehearsal rooms, and are something to be very proud of. And I hope every member of the board, and there's a reason why no sitting board member who sought reelection this past year received an opponent, it's because I believe the community also recognizes what a well-run and strong institution this is and what great leadership it has. Another thing we did for students, which is exciting, which bedeviled us for 12 years, is the technology, the information technology system that, we had a system that was falling apart, and year after year after year, we were told it was going to collapse on us, and how are we going to fix it? We now have a technology infrastructure, an IT system, that makes it so much more user-friendly for a student to register for classes, to participate in instruction from their homes and off-site, and then it helps the administration provide better service to students. And that's something that did not exist three years ago. First, most importantly, though, and the thing that I'm most proud of, and I hope the rest of the board is most proud of, is the fact that we kept a promise and made this district accessible to students from our high schools in our district, and that nobody who graduates from a high school in the Pasadena Area Community College District has the door closed on them when they're seeking access to classes. We've, you, together and with Mark's leadership, we've expanded that, and that, and it's so important. That wasn't the case. This was the first fall in memory in my time, in my 12 years, that I didn't get a call from a parent or a student or an aunt or an uncle saying, "My son or daughter or nephew can't get a class at PCC. Can you help? Can you help get them registered?" And that's something that's working, and I know that Dr. Bell and Bob Miller and others have really made, reoriented this institution to serve students and be accessible to students. And again, I can't say how many, even before that, how grateful I am for Mark, Bob Bell and Bob Miller to always field that call, when I got somebody from the community saying, "I need this, can you help me with that?" And making sure that we as an institution were responsive, because Pasadena City College is critical to Pasadena and our communities. This city, these neighboring communities need a successful PCC, need a vibrant PCC. I had the privilege of being a principal for a day just about six weeks ago at Rose City High School. It's the continuation kind of high school of last resort for a lot of the students from the Pasadena Unified School District. They don't have a lot of other options, and to a person, every teacher, every student told me, "We need PCC. We need help from PCC. We want to send our students to PCC." And without PCC, you lose hope. There's people that, if PCC weren't there, they would have no other option or no other access to higher education. And that's the one important message that I want the board to continue to focus on, and I know they will, and I know each and every one of you will, is that every decision should be governed by, will it continue to expand access to students, to classes, to achieve their dreams? Not only for the students at the continuation schools and the other schools, but also, I've been finding, and I know the results bear out, and Brockston and his team has done amazing work, the students, the most competitive students, the students that could go to a highly selective four-year university are also choosing PCC, and they're having a great experience and getting great instruction. This is all done, obviously, in partnership with the faculty and the staff, but it's the leadership of the board and the administration that needs to remain focused on this, and I'm going to look to do what I can continue to do to support the effort of the board, express my appreciation to my colleagues on the board, and also, in the role that I have at the state level, I love holding PCC up as a beacon to the entire state as to, "Hey, here's a place that knows what it's doing and getting it done right, and let's see what the other institutions across the state can learn from PCC." That's not to say we've never had any challenges or bumps in the road, but when you look at the big picture, the things that matter to students and others, we're doing a heck of a job, and I'm really proud of the time I've spent working with my colleagues on the Board of Trustees and looking forward to continuing to advocate and partner and see the amazing future ahead for PCC. So, that's all I wanted to share. Thank you so much for this recognition, and I really, really appreciate it.
Governor Baum, if you would just remain here. Congressman Adam Schiff wanted to give you an official recognition, and for that, I call Teresa Lamb Simpson. Teresa.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. On behalf of Congressman Adam Schiff, before I begin my remarks to Mr. Baum, Dr. Sugimoto, congratulations on being honored, recognized as the 12th official president of PCC. Enjoy your semi-retirement. On behalf of Congressman Adam Schiff, I have one thing to present and one thing that will be given to you at a later time. I have a certificate of recognition presented to Jeffrey L. Baum with appreciation for your 12 years of service as the Pasadena Area Community College District Trustee, Area One, and in recognition of outstanding and invaluable service to the community.
Thank you very much.
That's the one thing.
We're very lucky that Adam's part of, represents our district in Washington.
Thank you. And in addition, Congressman Schiff has commissioned a United States flag to be flown over the Capitol in your honor for your service. So, thank you.
Governor Baum, I'd ask you to stay at the podium for the next recognition of Dr. Lisa Sugimoto. Just give me one second here, and I call President Martin forward. Okay. I call to the podium, Dr. Lisa Sugimoto. President Martin and members of the Board of Trustees, as superintendent president, one of my responsibilities is to make sure in this 90th anniversary year that we get our history right, okay? And we have an important historical fact to record today. You're looking at a photograph right there of President John Harbison, who served from 1927 to 1950, the longest-serving president at PCC. He is photographed there welcoming back to PCC Esther Nishio, one of the very first students from the internment camp. Dr. Lisa Sugimoto was absolutely crucial in having the NISEE graduation to honor the returnees from the internment camps. Now, when Dr. Sugimoto was first appointed, she was appointed acting superintendent president. But we learned by looking at the record, because we were trying to be scrupulous about it, we learned that actually the board took an action during that year to make Dr. Sugimoto the superintendent president for the year 2009, 2010. And for that reason, President Martin, I am recommending to you that we recognize Dr. Lisa Sugimoto as the 12th Superintendent President of Pasadena City College.
We have a, we have the official portrait. This will join the other superintendent president portraits, of course, up on the wall. This one, of course, will be the best-looking of the superintendent. I'm going to ask, Trustee Baum, as his last official function to actually, do you have another, you'll do that one, I'll do this one.
No, I was lucky enough to work with Lisa, and Lisa was always a, provided a sense of caring, and also integrity and focusing us on how to keep the institution going and progressing during some very turbulent times. And then I was honored, when Lisa was president, that we were able to do the NISEE graduation. And when, the first time I served as Board President, the most significant thing I was able to do was to present a high school diploma to Mr. Hayakawa and recognize the, or try to do something small but to correct an injustice that had happened in the past and at least provide full recognition from Pasadena City College.
Thank you.
And Lisa was the leader in that, too. And Lisa's almost a next-door neighbor of mine as well, and grew up in the area, too.
Thank you so much, Jeff.
Sure, so I'm glad to have this recognition.
Beautiful. Now, I know this is going to be on the wall.
Is there anything you want to say?
Well, let's see if I can get this little thing to work, since, you know, we're all in the technology here. Well, first off, thank you to the Board of Trustees for this honor. I respect and admire you greatly for the work you do and the service you provide this community to make sure that the college is in good hands with the leadership that is here, administration and the president of the college. And thank you, Dr. Rocha, for this honor. You know, I also wanted to make sure I recognized and thanked Mr. Baum for his service, in particular as a board member for the last 12 years, and specifically because he represented my parents' district, and I think that's very important, given if you knew my parents, that it's very important. Jeff knows them very well. You know, I was very honored to serve the students and the community as the Pasadena Area Community College District's 12th Superintendent President, and thank you very much for that. Having started my community college career at PCC in a classified position many years ago, the board's appointment of me as the president came at a very opportune time, and you've mentioned it, Dr. Rocha, that the NISEE diploma project occurred during that presidency. And I always believed that things happen for a reason, whether we believe it or not. It was the right time for me to be here. The NISEE, who had their education in... It was the right time for me to be here. The NICE, who had their education interrupted during World War II, when they were evacuated to internment camps and had their education interrupted, at that time were then recognized and given honorary degrees. And as I signed each of those diplomas, one of the, it was one of the highlights of the time that I was here, but I also recognized how that very simple act of signing that diploma was going to change those people's lives after those many years of not being honored or recognized for the time they were here. And it really made a big difference to see the families and those who received the diplomas here. And I'll never forget the day of commencement, standing on that platform and watching them march in, and every student that was graduating standing up and applauding their accomplishment and that they were there. And I have to recognize some of the wonderful individuals in this room who really helped and supported that program and getting that off the ground. Susie Ling, Harry Kawahara, Donna Mitoma, and Judy Oye are in the audience right now, and I wish to thank you for your help and support during that time. I'm going to keep this very short, but I will let you know that I continue my contacts with Esther Nishio, and this picture is an amazing photograph of Dr. Harbison welcoming her back. And after the many times that she had the difficulties of coming back to Pasadena, he stood firm as a leader and said this was the right thing to do. And the right thing to do is what is happening now. And I appreciate so much what the board is doing and the president's doing to lead this college forward into the next century. So thank you very much for this honor and privilege, and I will see you again, since I'm serving on the foundation board, and wonderfully so. I'm enjoying that honor also very much. Thank you very much.
We have to give up the podium now.
Again, I want to also thank Dr. Sugimoto, who I count as a friend, for making me the 13th president. That's all I need to say about that. Ladies and gentlemen, protocol dictates that when a ranking member of the government of the state of California enters the room, that I officially recognize him. In a moment, we will have a swearing-in ceremony, but we are honored to have with us and let us officially recognize the Controller of the State of California, Mr. John Chang. And now I would like to turn our attention to the Tournament of Roses Queen and her court. And I call to the podium, Queen Anna Acosta. Anna. Anna, we're honored to have you with us. I would like to recognize those tournament members responsible for taking the queen and her court everywhere. First of all, we have with us as our guest, Mr. Alex Young. Alex, are you with us? Okay. And committee members Fred Baileyan, Fred is here, and J.J. Giff. Can J.J.? Anna, we have recognitions to give you, and of course, we're honored to have you and the Rose Court with us. I turn the podium over to give us greetings, and then we will give you our recognition, and we're just so glad that you're with us tonight.
Thank you so much.
It's all yours, Anna. Yep.
Hello, everyone. Like you said, my name is Queen Anna Acosta. I'm 17 years old, and I'm a senior at Polytechnic School. And I've grown up in Pasadena my entire life. Being on the Rose Court has been such an amazing experience, and the Tournament of Roses has such a history that is very closely tied to the Pasadena City College system. And as many of you may know, that's actually how the court used to be selected. They would be students at Pasadena City College. So it's definitely an honor having a PCC student here with us today. And going with that, I would like to introduce you all to each of our court members. So I'll start over there with Princess Elizabeth, and Princess Katie, Princess Kayla, Princess Alicia, Princess Jamie, and our PCC student Princess Sarah. And I would like to say that I think our theme this year, Dreams Come True, is very amazing, because it very much ties into Pasadena City College' mission to give opportunities to countless members of the Pasadena community to continue further their education and pursuing their dreams and making things come true by pursuing a higher education. So I would like to thank you for all of the work you do for not only Pasadena, but the greater Los Angeles community and Southern California. And thank you for your continued support of the Tournament of Roses, and thank you for having us here today. It's an honor.
Thank you so much, Hannah. We have some other business to conduct, important business here. First of all, we, of course, we're here at PCC, so we have to recognize Sarah's parents who are with us, and we want to recognize James Hansen and Frederick, her mom, and her sister Elizabeth. If you would rise and, okay. And so, I don't know, if we could, if you could help me out, and we will ask each one of the princesses forward to receive this recognition.
Yes. Princess Sarah Elizabeth Hansen. Princess Jamie Ann Kwong. Oh, that's me.
That's you.
Yes.
Rose Court Queen Anna Marie Acosta.
Princess Catherine Diane Litt.
Thank you.
Catherine, great. Thanks.
Princess Elizabeth Katie Wolf.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And Princess Kayla Diana Johnson Granberry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, all we are honored by your presence, and we thank you so much. We're just proud of you. Obviously, we're especially proud of Sarah, but we're proud of each one of you, because you are just one wonderful ambassadors to the world. And what you will represent on that New Year's morning, and all of us are out there, is hope and optimism for the future. And you're just part of a grand tradition, and we're just so grateful that you could spend a few minutes with us. And now, we're going to take a recess, and we're going to do something that you probably don't know how to do, and that's take photos.
Need some practice.
Have you gotten any practice at that recently?
A little bit.
Okay. So, President Martin, if it's okay with you, we'll take our recess for a brief photo opportunity. There's refreshments there, and we'll reconvene the meeting shortly.
We are in recess. Now entering the second of tonight's meetings, and this is our organizational meeting, first and foremost, to seat the new board, and then we'll have the election of officers. So I'm very pleased to ask State Controller John Chang to come back up and join me at the rostrum, and our four trustees who have won the election. If you will also join us at the rostrum, we're going to officially swear you in.
I think you get the honors of reading this, if that's acceptable to you.
Sure, absolutely.
They give you little pauses there.
Okay.
And we want you four maybe front and center, maybe right up here, so everybody can see you. Right there, is that good? I think we could do this collectively, if that's okay. So I think we'll do them all at once.
Okay.
Ask them to raise their right hand.
Okay.
And then I'll let you take--
Good.
So if you'd raise your right hand.
Well, please raise your right hands, and repeat after me. I--
I.
Please state your name.
Anthony Fellow.
Do solemnly swear and/or affirm--
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend--
That I will support and defend--
--the Constitution of the United States--
The Constitution of the United States.
--and the Constitution of the state of California--
And the Constitution of the state of California.
--against all enemies, foreign and domestic--
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
--that I will bear true faith and allegiance--
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
--to the Constitution of the United States--
To the Constitution of the United States.
--and the Constitution of the state of California--
And the Constitution of the state of California.
--that I take this obligation freely--
That I take this obligation freely.
--without any mental reservation--
Without any mental reservation.
--or purpose of evasion--
Or purpose of evasion.
--and I will well and faithfully--
And I will well and faithfully--
--discharge the duties--
Discharge the duties.
--upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Tony, I'm the next.
You have to shake your hands. I'm still president. Do you want to--
Well, I'd like them to have an opportunity to express if they want to, and then--
I just want to thank you all for being here today, and it's a pleasure to have been re-elected to this board again. And being a professor, it's even greater for me to be on this board, because I do love education. I have a passion for education. And I hope with my colleagues, we can continue to improve PCC. And it is now the greatest college, community college in the United States, as confirmed, as we saw in our last meeting, and we'll keep it that way. So, thank you.
I also want to thank everyone for being here. And, you know, this is, the four years that I've served so far have just really been a highlight in this chapter of my life. When people ask, "Why do you want to be on the Board of Education?" And having now done this, I have to say, it's one of the best things I've ever done. I think this college is wonderful. I think the faculty and the staff here are really outstanding. And it's really just a great honor that this is occurring at a time of such momentous things, such as Dr. Sugimoto being recognized as the 12th president, and so many of my Area Five constituents here, Bill Youngblood, and also my South Pasadena group here. So I'm really proud to be representing this area. Thank you.
Well, first, I want to thank you for being here today, and I appreciate, and I'm very excited for my next four years. This has been quite an exciting event for me. When I first got elected four years ago, I didn't know which way I was up. Now, I have a great relationship with my community, the school, and I am excited to continue to serve students, because I've seen all the wonderful things that we, as board members and as the college, can accomplish to make a change for our kids, to make sure that they succeed in their life. So, thank you, and we will continue to work to do the best we can to move our students through. Thanks.
As the newcomer, John said maybe I should make my remarks last, because I'm likely to talk the longest. My wife, Adriana, is here tonight, and she put up with a lot during the last few months during the campaign and all this vauldroll, but I certainly couldn't have done that without her. So, Adriana. PCC was a kind of a path to opportunity for both of us. Both of us attended PCC for one year. I went on and transferred down to USC as a second-year architecture student a long time ago. I didn't have to go to PCC, but I chose to, because that's how I was going to get into the architecture school there at USC. Adriana didn't have to go to PCC, but she chose to go to PCC. A year later, she transferred to UCLA and ended up with a degree in history from one of the finest history departments in the country. of the finest history departments in the country. But you know, during my campaign, I found that the people in my area at least have an enormous regard for PCC, and I do too. It's got great administration, it's got great faculty members, and it's got great students. And I want to mention just three of them. When I was here a long time ago, my counselor was a guy named Russ Moon. And he was the academic counselor, but he also became a friend, because he was the advisor for the Highlanders, the mountaineering club here at PCC. I was very active in that. I even participated in their outings and all that for a number of years after I left. When I was down at SC, I kind of sneaked back and you know, go on their functions, because it was really good. And I was on the gymnastics team here, and my coach was Jerry Todd. Now, he's got a bust over here in the court of champions right over there, he's one of the first guys. And both of them were extraordinary gentlemen, and not just teachers and counselors, but real role models. And success that I've enjoyed is in no small part attributable to their influence. As far as students go, a couple of months ago, I was over at Citibank, and mentioned to tell her there that I was... Well, what's new, he said, when I was trying to get some money. And I said, well, I'm running for PCC Board of Trustees, so I said, well, I'm going to PCC. And I said, well, how do you like it? And without reading from a script, he said, "PCC made the impossible possible for me." So I don't know where he got that tagline, but I wrote it down, and it's going to be great for my campaign. Aram Boyarzian, he's an art student here, and he made it clear to me that if you're going through the art program here at PCC, you've got a leg up over everybody in the whole country getting into art center. And who doesn't want to go to art center if they're an art student? Well, he's here at PCC, and as he said, PCC is going to make the impossible possible for him. If he does well, he's got inside track. So I'm confident that PCC still has great administrators and faculty members, and I know they've got great students, so I'm real happy to be on the board. Thank you.
a pretty special swearing-in for us. Thank you. Okay, well, as part of the organization meeting, it's time to do some business. And the first important act of business is the election of a board president. And I would entertain a motion. Dr. Mann.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Tony Fellow.
Okay, and we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We don't have our electronic clickers here today, we're going to do this the old-fashioned way, IRNA. All in favor, please say aye. Wait, I have to start with the advisory vote, sorry. I got to say aye. Remainder of the board, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, with that, I am thrilled to turn the gavel over. I am thrilled because I am...
Why don't you go through all of them?
I am thrilled because I have got the opportunity this year to work very closely with Dr. Fellow. And as board president, you get these communications from all the rest of the board, thank you. And I've always looped in Dr. Fellow on everything that's gone on, so that he could have a little bit of pre-warning, pre-training, how it works when you become president, not, you know, he's an experienced elected official. And it's just been sensational. I've enjoyed the officers' meetings, I've enjoyed when we've represented the board together collectively, just brilliant, understands education, understands PCC, and a wonderful individual. So I'm thrilled that he is our board president now, so. And it's not bad that I don't have to worry about a lot of this stuff anymore. Okay, we're going to election of... Entertain a motion for Vice President, Trustee Frazier.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Belinda Brown.
Okay, Trustee Brown has been nominated. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Wa. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
Remainder of the board, if you'll signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, say nay. So congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Now Vice President of our board, Vice President Brown. And I'll entertain a motion for Clerk.
Clerk, I'd like to nominate Linda Wa.
Okay, Linda Wa's been nominated. Dr. Mann.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
And remainder of the board, if in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you. And finally, our Secretary of the Board, entertain a motion. Dr. Mann.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Rocha.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
Remainder of the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Okay, none. So congratulations for another year as Secretary of the Board.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I am privileged to turn the gavel over. I don't know if you want to change seats or change gavels.
No, that's fine, just sit there.
We'll just change gavels. Okay, and it's now yours.
My first action is to thank you, John. Thank you for those kind words, and it's been a pleasure to serve with you. I've known you for many years, and I think we used to ride on the MetroLink back and forth, and I think you did a great job. And on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I'd like to give you this commendation in your own little gavel to remember us by. I'm sure you have a lot of those now. I just wanted to say, I want to thank the trustees very much for having faith in me, and I will try to do the best job that I can. I've had the privilege in my life to run water board meetings, city councils, and meetings of the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, and these boards have been, have had members ranging from five to 35. And I look at board meetings as business meetings. We were elected to do the work of the public in an honest, judicious, and speedy fashion, and that's how I approach meetings. And we have much to crow about at PCC, because of all of you here, the faculty, the staff, the trustees. We are the top community college in the nation, as we heard at our last meeting, and that is something really to crow about. And during this academic year, we will be preparing for one of the most important events of a college besides graduation, and that is accreditation. And I've been through many accreditations, and it's a rigorous process, but it's also an important one for the reputation of this institution, and most importantly, for the students who attend PCC. And nothing, and I will say nothing, is going to impede a perfect accreditation report under my leadership. In addition, I hope to institute a number of new ideas. For one, I will be meeting along with Belinda Brown and Linda Wa and the President with members of shared governance, at least every other month, or maybe every month if we can do that. And these informal meetings will have no agenda, but we will talk and listen to one another on how to make PCC a better place to be. And I thank all of you again, and for all of you for being here today, and let's get down to business. Okay? Mr. President?
Thank you, President Fellow. The next item on the agenda is Item F, Certification of Signatures. Because the offices have changed, we have a new signature sheet, and it requires the action and approval of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, we have that taken care of. And our other item on the agenda today is setting day and time of regular meetings for 2014 and retreats. I think you have a sheet in front of you that explains all that, and if there's no questions, we'll move on. Number H is the Board of Trustees', Committees', and Representatives, and I will be appointing these at the next meeting that we have. I will canvass the trustees to see which committees they'd like to sit on, and we will go from there. Number I is the annual, the adjourned annual organizational meeting. What is that?
It's a meeting we just concluded.
We just had, okay.
Just one point of order for clarity.
Go ahead.
Do we need, do we need a motion on the Certificate of Signatures?
I don't know, do we?
I think we do.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move approval of the signatures.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Simon, a second from Mr. Martin. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have some introductions and recognitions today, Mr. Rocha.
Yes, I turn to Assistant Superintendent Dr. Bob Bell to introduce our new athletic director.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha, President Fellow, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to introduce you our new incoming athletic director, Tony Barbone. He goes by Bones. Tony comes to us with over 25 years, 23 years' experience as a coach and athletic administrator in higher education. He's coached baseball at the high school collegiate and professional levels, including at the Zusa Pacific and Concordia Universities, where teams reached the NCAA Regional Championships and World Series, and Tony was named the NAIA Coach of the Year in the year 2002. Administratively, he served as the Sports Information Director at Citrus College, and since an athletic director at both Zusa Pacific and Concordia College, and he currently, since 2009, has served as the Athletic Director at El Camino College. If I read the full list of responsibilities and accolades that Tony has, it would take a lot longer time than I have, so I'm just going to now say that we are extremely fortunate to have him join us. And with that, let me introduce you, Tony Bones Barbone.
Thank you, Dr. Bell, and I apologize to my shoulders or my sides here, but first of all, it's a privilege to be in front. I'm not very good at coats and ties and pomp and circumstances, I'm just a guy, I'm just a trench guy, but I appreciate being here. When Dr. Bell made that request, I felt it was an honor. I want to thank him and the committee for a very thorough, very respectful, very concentrated interview process, of which I was fortunate to be a part of. And then I want to thank Dr. Bell and Dr. Rocha for allowing me to sit with them and have a chance to make the decision that they did, and make the decision to share my opportunities with you. And the board now has, I'm assuming Dr. Bell has confirmed that. And so I thank all of you. Again, I guess being the new guy, you get a few extra minutes. Just real quick FYI, I'm briefly reminded as I'm here of the things that have happened since the decision is made by Dr. Bell, Dr. Rocha, and the board to bring me here to Pasadena City. I'm reminded that there was a guy that worked down the street for a while, his name was Woody Hayes, and every now and then, he would come here to Pasadena and visit. And one thing that he said that stuck with me often is that you win with people. And since the decision has been made for me to come to Pasadena City College and embrace my family here, I've been just so embraced by so many people. Dave, his admin Glenna, there's a gal that works facilities, her name is Sarah Flores. I mean, she called me, said, "Bones, what accent color do you want in your office?" And I'm like, so I called my wife, and I'm like, "What are accent colors, you know? Aren't you just supposed to have like Swiss coffee, move on, and hang a nail?" Ruben, I haven't, is Ruben here today? Ruben's here, he brought my keys. And Linda set that up, and just the way that, nobody knows if I'm good, bad, or indifferent yet, but they've just embraced me. And I think it's important that the board knows, the attendees know, the wonderful people that are here, and I haven't even begun to break the iceberg. So I thank all of you, I thank the board for accepting the recommendation, the two really, really wise gentlemen, and I hope that all of you have a wonderful holiday, a great 2014. I look forward to partnering with you soon. Thank you very much.
Do we have the representatives of United Without Boundaries with us tonight? Were they, okay, they've, just to put closure on that, last time, the board will recall that we had a brief information about the Dream Center. And we have an organization on campus, United Without Boundaries, a student organization that is dedicated to social justice for all students, but in particularly, students who are undocumented from all communities. And they have identified a model at UC Berkeley, you'll recall, and they call the Dream Center, a center that would serve students of this community. So they had been scheduled to come and the people from Berkeley, but because we changed the meeting dates and so on and so forth, we will reschedule that. So that is the introductions and recognitions, President Fellow.
Thank you very much. We do have to go back to Item G, and I have to entertain a motion to approve the setting time of the regular meetings for 2014.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Wa.
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any other discussions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Special.
Aye.
Thank you very much. This is the time for public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to talk on these items should do so right now, if you have a...
We have one speaker, Melissa Michelson.
There's a three-minute limit.
There's a new staffing proposal being considered today. I went to the college council meeting at which this proposal was presented very briefly. Dr. Rocha flashed the imperceptible charts projected on the wall here in this room, wanted feedback on the charts that were never printed out, never posted, never shared with the public. The college council had never even seen this latest version before. Despite the fact that Dr. Rocha kept assuring the room that they would be taking feedback into consideration, the chart already had a start date set for January 1st, 2014, even before it came to you or is coming to you today. I requested after that to see the chart again, so I could carefully fill out a survey that was handed out on the spot. Again, the chart was never posted online or shared with the school. I was told to go to the president's office, where I could take a peek at the chart. Why couldn't it be emailed to me? It shouldn't be made that hard to look at and give requested feedback on the reorganization of a school that would be affecting us all. I ask that the Board of Trustees seriously consider the following: When did all the deans look at and provide feedback on this? When did faculty and staff look at and provide feedback on this? How were surveys disseminated? How many and how many surveys were turned in? This whole episode is a disingenuous way of appearing to get campus buy-in, if indeed that was the administration's intention. This is paying lip service to transparency and campus-wide feedback and collaboration, and it is just one example of a disconnect on this campus, many of which are impeding accreditation, Trustee Fellows. Happy holidays to you. Bye.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will have approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on November 6, 2013. Entertain a motion.
I move approval.
We have a motion by Ms. Brown, second by Mr. Frazier.
Actually, just a question, which minutes are we approving?
November 6, 2013.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Frazier. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I need to abstain, because I was not a member of the board at the time.
Thank you very much. We also have to approve the minutes for the study session on November 20, 2013. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Martin, a second from Ms. Wa. Mr. Frazier?
Abstain.
Abstain. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Abstain.
Finally, we have a minutes of the special meeting we have to approve for December 4, 2013. Entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Martin. All in favor, Simon?
Actually, I have a addition to make.
Okay.
If we could just note that because it was closed session predominantly, I'd like to indicate that I was excused.
Right.
Because right now, I'm not there at all.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Thank you very much. At this time.
Pardon me, President Fellows, I, the meeting began with an open session, and there was an opportunity for any member of the public who wanted to, to address the board. So I don't think it's appropriate to say that the student trustee was excused.
Well, trustee man, that's fair enough. I didn't, I wouldn't have gone into it, but I wasn't given notice of the meeting. Had I been given notice that there was a special meeting happening, as the rest of the board obviously was, I would have probably attended for the open session portion. However, I was not given any notice of it and only found out that it was happening afterwards. The last that I heard was that our meeting for December 4th had been canceled. I seem to be having a problem with some communications, so I was not made aware of the meeting. And as a board member, I would have expected that if there was a special meeting to which I was expected to attend, or either way, that I would have been given a notice.
I withdraw my comment with the understanding that Mr. Frazier did not receive adequate notice. We'll make sure you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have item number M, which is approval of the consent calendar.
We have one speaker.
President Fellow, I should point out that item 58P is removed from your consideration at this point because our closed session will follow this meeting.
Thank you.
So the board will meet and deliberate in closed session and report any action, any reportable action after the end of closed session. But other than that, all of the other consent items are before you.
Ms. Wa, do we have someone who understands?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval, but I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I would like to comment that with these, if we approve these, we'll be approving the retirement of Dr. Gary Wood, who has served for thirty-seven and a half years as a faculty member in business computer technology, and Kieran L. Ayas, I guess, 22 years in human resources, and like to comment, compliment them on their many years of service and wish them well in their retirement. And I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, Kieran.
Thank you for mentioning that, Dr. Mann.
I'd like to have 68B looked at separately, please.
Okay, we will pull 68B. Have a motion from Dr. Mann. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Brown. Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. We'll go to 68B right now.
Yeah, I have a question about the item on Southern California Edison, provide use of parking lot at CEC. There will be a 3% increase each additional year, $80,635.61 per year. We're paying, or Southern California Edison, not much money per year?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Thompson, dating back to when the CEC was constructed, it was constructed on Southern California Edison right-of-way land, and they granted the district the right to construct the center on that land, but there was a requirement that we were to fund and pay for rights to use the parking lots that are basically under the right-of-way. So these funds, it's every five years, we renew this agreement. These funds are part of that arrangement. They maintain the parking lot for the most part as well, and it does have a 3% escalator within the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to pass 68.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Frazier, a second from Ms. Wa. Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will now turn to item number N, additions and deletions to the credit curriculum, which is a routine item. Ms. Wa, we have a speaker.
We have two speakers. First one, Fu Nguyen. Second speaker would be Jim Ma.
Good evening, the board. My name is Fu Nguyen, Supervisor of Lab Service for the CTE. Along with me tonight is one of my colleague is Rena. Please come up. And one of the students here in the classroom that we have for this semester, also Jason Rogelio. The reason here tonight is we would like to present to the board one of the SOO student learning outcome, one of the new course that we launched this semester by the Dean Salomon Davila. We call it a Tech 198, but the new name for it, we call MIT 101, which is Manufacturing Industrial Technology 101. It's mostly student who taking this course will combine all the disciplines, which is machine shop welding, electronics, and EDT design, engineering design technology, and we call robotics. So student can share the thought, the experience of this class to the board and the student learning outcome at the end, so this is the voice of the student.
Yes, my name is Jay Ma. I'm a student from Tech 198, Intro to Robotics, and I would like to share my experience. In the very beginning, when I took this class, I didn't know what I was getting myself into. After these past couple of months, the instructors taught me multiple disciplines, disciplines like CAD design, electronic work, welding, and machine shop. It is truly an honor to become the first student ever for this class. The instructors gave us the real-world experience on producing these products, and I would like to see more of these classes in PCC. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Rogelio Torres. I'm also a student that participated in this class. I would like to agree with the previous student. I also came into this class not knowing anything related to this. I took it because one of the previous classes that I wanted to take was canceled. I definitely don't regret taking it. Actually, it was the best class I had this entire semester. We machined all the parts, we welded all the parts, we designed all the parts, all the electronics we did from scratch. I think it's the perfect class for anyone who wants to participate in a technical area. I loved it because it was all hands-on. I don't like classes where you have to sit for hours and hours just listening to teachers talk. I mean, it's, that's not me. I'm a more hands-on kind of guy. I learned a lot. I would definitely recommend it to any student who doesn't know exactly what they want to do coming to this school. So I would definitely 100% back this class up, and I recommend that it keeps going. But, thank you.
Thank you very much, the board, for supporting us with the new dean. The vision that he has is really make the student think PCC is a great place to come and learn. Thank you.
Thank all of you. We are now on, again, on item number N, the approval of additions, changes, and deletions to the credit and non-credit curriculum. The wishes of the board. We have to approve this.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Ms. Wa, a second from Mr. Martin. Mr. Simon.
Just a quick question. Are we, we're not also approving the A, the degree transfers, is that correct? These are just templates for our reference, or are we actually approving transfer degrees as well? There are three, and I just noticed that they aren't, I thought they were part of this, I just want to clarify.
I would think it's the whole thing.
Transfer model curriculum template for music, anthropology, and Spanish? Or are we just doing the?
We're approving the whole packet. That's why.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Those are, those are the three SB, new SB 1440 degrees that the curriculum, the process is the curriculum and instruction committee reviews and passes those and forwards those to the assistant superintendent. So these are indeed new SB 1440 degrees for approval.
And I just think that's worth noting, that we're adding three SB 1440 degrees to our roster of already lots of them.
That would make 22 that we have approved, thanks to the good work of the faculty and the curriculum instruction committee, which ranks us number one in the state.
Brilliant.
How would you like to vote on that?
I'd like to vote aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We're now on item number O this evening, which is to receive and set a public hearing regarding the initial proposal for negotiations for 2013, 2016 from the Pasadena Area Community College District and the Pasadena City College, California Federation of Teachers, and the wishes of the directors. We need to approve this.
Move approval.
We have a motion.
And set the public hearing date for?
The next meeting.
The next meeting.
Yes, what is that correction?
Initial proposal for district is for a three-year contract beginning 2014 and ending 2017.
Okay.
That appears in the title as well as in item number one.
Okay, thank you.
And the next meeting date is what?
January 15th.
January 15th.
Jan. 15th. So if the, if the board approves this item, we will be setting the public hearing for the next.
Right, okay, that's what I moved.
Right.
And I second.
Okay. And how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Item number P today is the commencement committing, and this is just an information item, nominations for speaker. And if someone has a speaker they would like to nominate Dr. Rocha, they would send it to?
Dr. Bell, did the commencement committee meet?
The commencement committee, Dr. Rocha, has met. We have sent the information out to the various shared governance groups, and if there is a recommendation or a name that the board, any member wants to forward, they report to the officers who appear as to have a reference.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So it's purely informational and procedural. At this time of year, the commencement committee meets to gather one and all nominations. You're familiar with the list. Sometimes the list has as many as 20 and 30 members on it. We wanted to pause at this moment and call it to the board's attention in the event that the board had any nominations for the public record that we could refer back to the committee. The process from here is that the nominations would then be discussed with the committee and then with the officers of the board of trustees as we move towards the final selection.
So the officers of the board will be involved in the process?
Yes, the first job is to, is to create the list of nominations, the very large field of nominations. And also nominations in case we want to make sure that in the front of the process, if there's any nominations from the board. And nominations do not necessarily have to be that you've talked to the individual and, you know, and they've agreed to come. Some of this is, you know, just suggestions as much. So we will collate a list, and we'll take it to the commencement committee and bring it back to the board of trustees. Actually, what we would do is meet with the officers of the board with the entire list, and then they would go through the process of calling the list down for a short list, if you will, for discussion and recommendation to the board of trustees, so.
I'm wondering if it would be possible, and certainly I would find it to be helpful, if we would have some type of discussion early on, is what do we want as a speaker? What do we expect to have occur? My own personal view is that some we've had in the past have not been outstanding. So, I mean, it seems to me that would be helpful to have a chance to, to address the issue of what is it we expect the speaker to be able to do? We want to be challenged, yes, but what does that mean, et cetera? So is that possible, or is that just?
It's absolutely possible, and your, your input is exactly what was solicited, and we've noted it and put it down in the record for the committee.
Dr. Mann.
I wonder if in addition to discussing what we expect in the speaker, if we could discuss the whole commencement, the ceremony, and particularly the length of time it takes so that half the people there are leaving before all the degrees have been awarded, I would like for us to have a discussion of that and not just have commencement roll on without the board having any kind of say about what they think it would be. I mean, the board awards the degrees, it's the student's commencement, but in a sense, we are the ones who do do this.
We will do that.
Yeah, so, President Fellow, what I was suggesting I'd ask the assistant superintendent to do would be to make sure that this input and any other input that you have to both the commencement itself and the process is rendered to Dr. Bell, who will carry it to the commencement committee for a full discussion and then carry it back here to the board, hopefully, if at all possible, for the January meeting since, you know, you know, we're into 2014 already.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Frazier.
Just one quick thing I want to put on public record, since it was profit out there. You know, we're coming into our 90th academic year, our 89th commencement, and so I think it's important that when we look at commencement speakers, we really look at our own history. I did mention this briefly to some of the people in the commencement committee, and having the opportunity to say, this has been our proud past, now let's look at our global future, I think would be a good statement, a good little PR drive. And frankly, having someone connected to this community. I was at the Community College League of California with trustees Wa and Salvage and Mann, and we found out that the community college honoree was an Academy Award-winning screenwriter, very famous guy, who received his AA from PCC. And we had no idea. And so I think that he's a perfect candidate for a commencement speaker. His name's Dustin Lance Black, I think that should be put forward. But also, even in general, as a general idea, look at who has a connection to PCC, so that the students who are there will really look at this person and think, wow, that was a product of this college. That's what I could be in 10, 15, 20 years, and maybe I'll be giving commencement at PCC one day, because I will have distinguished myself. And so I think that that's something I hope the committee will look at.
And I heard he gave a great talk, too.
It was, yes, brilliant.
Very good, thank you for those comments. We will now turn to shared governance and, no, report, Dr. Rocha, you're next.
Thank you, President Fellow. Item Q is actually a large written report. There is nothing before you.
Before you speak, we do have a.
We do have one speaker for item Q, that's Dan Haley.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Dan Haley, I'm the Treasurer of the Academic Senate.
And I'm Pat Bros, I'm the Secretary of the Academic Senate.
And tonight, I'd like to address a section of item Q, the search authorization for full-time faculty for 2014, because there were several violations of college policy 6100 for hiring faculty. The policy asks for academic deans and faculty to submit applications to the Faculty Hire and Priorities Committee, which is convened by the Academic Senate, and the committee comes up with a ranked list to present to the administration. This year, for some reason, the academic deans were told not to participate in the process and instead to submit their applications directly to the administration. The committee came up with their ranked list, and they met with the representatives of the administration, and there were two competing lists. Now, there was a long discussion, and a compromise was raised finally, but before the meeting ended, the chair of the committee asked the administration to hold off because we had not reached full agreement, because he wanted to bring the compromise list back to the full committee so they could review it. And the administration representatives agreed to that. But the very next day, it was announced that the process was closed and the list was final, and that was that. It's things like this that are breaking down trust, that are breaking down lines of communication. And I have to point out that the college has been dinged last few accreditation times on governance of the college. The faculty are trying very hard to adhere to their responsibilities in regard to the Title V mandated shared governance responsibilities and also the policies of the college, and we would ask the administration to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Rocha.
Okay, thank you, President Fellow. The entirety of my report is before you in writing, so my intention, as it always is, usually I give you my report in writing in advance for you to see, and then I usually state that is the sum and substance of my report. So I have given you my report in copious detail. There is no action before you, there's nothing before you for consideration, this is information. I will say, as we go through, and this is at the, at the pleasure of the board of trustees, there is a financial aid report that was previously requested by. there is a financial aid report that was previously requested by trustee Frazier. There's an accreditation self-study update from the co-chairs, Matt Jordan and Stephanie Fleming. There's a very detailed update on the Centennial Master Plan process update, and there's a search authorization for full-time faculty for August 2014 appointment, and all of those four are before the public. You also have before you the information on the chart, that, the functions and staffing chart, that we first brought to college council. That is for, not for consideration or approval tonight. We will be releasing it once we complete the consultation, since as the members of the college councils, it was brought out into the public, since the members of the college council, since there are names on it, and people's individuals' names and their status with the college, their assignments, their administrative assignments may change in the, in the course of consultation, that we felt at this point that it was important to continue the consultation and get this in front of the board as an informational item. From here, we will continue the consultation pretty much after the holidays, and just as we did at the college council, whatever the final staffing is, we will certainly share that with the entire college. So, and that's what I have. That's the total of my report, unless there's any questions.
Is there questions? Mr. Frazier?
Just a couple of things. On that last point, the reorg chart, since it has been publicly available, is it a closed session item? Because I do not have a copy of that. And so, I'd like to request that I get a copy of that along with the rest of the board members, then, if they have it. I certainly don't. The, on the financial aid element?
Mr. Frazier, you, did you not, I thought I, if I did, forgive me, because in our personal consultation, I thought I gave you a copy.
No.
Okay, then that's my error. I apologize.
Okay. No problem. So, on the financial aid report, I'm glad to see our default rate is so low compared to the national. I'd like to ask maybe if, just an email conversation later, maybe if there are any strategies the college is working on to lower that, because I think that 10% compared to 18% is great, but obviously, if we can get our default rate down, that would be fantastic. And there are some benefits clearly that are demonstrated. It says here that if we get it below 5%, we gain some benefits as a college, and I think that's important.
Surely, I'll have Dr. Semien give you a detailed answer to that very good question.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just not right now, but I think it'd be beneficial if we would have a response to Mr. Haley's comments at our next meeting.
Oh, by, by all means. Happy to do so.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll now turn to shared governance, and we'll begin with the associated student body. These are announcements, if you have one or two announcements.
Hi. So, first, I would like to congratulate Dr. Salvage, trustee Salvage. Thank you.
Jordan, if you wouldn't mind, if you'd go to the mic, please.
I don't mind. I protect my voice.
Yeah. If I go to the mic, I'm going to blow you guys out. There you go. Thank you. Okay, hi. So, and I invite all the trustees to attend, either one or two of you, I know you guys all can't be there, to attend our meetings. Our meetings, the associate students meet every Wednesday in CC 212, which is that conference room over there, at 12 noon, if you guys want to know what's going on, right, with some of our student leaders and student reps, as well as our students. We had a very successful fall 2013 year. It was amazing. We got a lot of stuff hammered out and work done. One of our most successful events was Counselor Day, which is where we had financial aid advisement and counseling come to give sort of like a quick counseling appointments to students that had quick questions, and it was very successful. Our last one, we had about, I think it was over 100 students show up just to ask questions about financial aid advisement and counseling, which is very important. Some of the things we're looking forward to in spring of 2014 are, is our legislative advocacy agenda. We're going to definitely revamp that, and we're also, some of our lovely lobby committee members, including me, are going to go to the CCLC conference, which is going to be in Sacramento, I believe. So, we're going to get, go ahead and get some new information and some wonderful ideas on how we can progressively push for more student success on campus. Other than that, you guys are always welcome to email me if you have any questions, any comments, or concerns, and you'll be, I'm really looking forward to spring. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosco. Mr. Carlos Altamirano, Classified Senate.
Good evening, everyone. Just actually, we'll make this quick. The Classified Senate, we actually met today, and we just want to announce that we're gearing up for our spring classified and student scholarships. We award a couple every year, naming this spring, and we're actually working with associated students to make sure that we get the word out promptly and effectively. Last, I've been promoting the classified days and the event that we're having in May, and just wanted to know that we actually selected our location for our event, which is going to be in the Huntskin Library, so still keeping it close, but a little more intimate, taking off campus. And lastly, we just wanted to thank the superintendent, Vice President, Bob Miller, for presenting to the Classified Senate today the realignment, which again, it was beneficial for us to actually see what the changes are going to be coming along and have that organizational structure. So, just thank you for coming. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Eduardo Cairo, Academic Senate.
Good evening, everyone. Just real quickly, so the Academic Senate, we will be continuing in the spring academic year, holding town hall meetings, and I hope you're able to attend these. Second, we, starting in the spring, also will be conducting the Academic Senate evaluation of the president. At the last meeting, there was a vote to, against the reorganization, and it's primarily based on the fact that there's, that a lot of senators had, had a lot of questions that were simply unanswered. So, we're trying to be proactive. We'll be reconvening the task team in order to try to get as many answers, as many questions answered before we can take a next vote. And just one final thing, again, there were violations held at the faculty hiring priorities committee meeting, and it was, it was not mutually agreed upon. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Dave Douglas, Management Association.
Thank you, President Fellow. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I also like to, on behalf of the Management Association, welcome trustee Salvage.
Did you know Russ Boon?
Yes, I did.
You were nodding your head when I mentioned him.
I took my winter mountaineering class here at Pasadena City College. But anyway, thank you. We had a great holiday party last week. Appreciate those of you who were able to come. We saw some retirees and just had some general fellowship and proved that managers aren't very good singers. And we had our last management team meeting today and really reflected back on some of the great accomplishments we've had for the past semester and fall, and so we're looking forward to next year. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. And now, we'll turn to the trustees, and we'll begin with Mr. Frazier.
Thank you. I attended the CCLC conference in November, as I mentioned, and as a result of that, I enrolled myself in the Excellence in Trusteeship program. I encourage everyone else to do so. As far as I'm aware, I'm the first student to do it. So, we'll see. I have only five more months in which to complete everything. So, we'll see how that goes, and it's been a worthwhile experience, so any trustee that isn't enrolled, I would recommend doing it significantly. The Association of Student Trustees has been working on its reorganization, and ballots have gone out to all of the student trustees across the state to reconstitute that organization from the ground up, taking it in a different approach. And on a personal note, I've applied to transfer, so hopefully, I will be actually leaving not just the board, but the college by the end of my term here. And I, in all niceness, look forward to it. And that will be it.
Thank you, Simon. Dr. Salvage?
Well, I attended the CCLC also, and it was really an excellent program. All the breakout sections that I went to were very good. They have made available the PowerPoint presentations online, and I'm going to go over them and download the ones that, for the sessions I attended. They were all excellent sessions. I've also enrolled in the Excellence in Trusteeship program, and I attended the Foundation's Scholarship Award event, and the, in particular, the last three students who were up and explained what their background was and how they came to be here at PCC, and what the scholarship meant to them was very inspirational.
Thank you. And I just want to interject that all of us were at the scholarship event. I want to thank Bobby. I thought that was a very impressive, was there 600 students there?
200 students, 600 people.
How many scholarships did you give out?
About $237,000 to about 216,000.
That's very impressive, and I do thank the board for being there. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I was just going to add the same thing. As Ross commented, the three students who stood up and spoke at the end were extraordinarily moving and very, very deserving of the scholarship awards they received, and the entire evening was very impressive, very, very well done. Thank you, Bobby.
It's nice to see you up and around, and you'll be jogging next week. Dr. Mann?
I have nothing to add to what they've said.
Thank you. Ms. Wa?
Yes. Let's see, the San Marino and the Altadena Rotarians attended the Veterans Holiday Dinner, and I just want to say that, you know, some of the vets got up and spoke, and as a result of that, the Rotarians are now really gung-ho on getting in there and helping at the Veterans Center and, and really tying in with what we can do in terms of business opportunities and work assistance for the vets. So, I think that was really great. I also want to just underscore what trustee Frazier mentioned about the excellence in trusteeship. So, you have until the, all trustees have until the end of the year, and you can count any of your training that you've had for this year towards that, the two years to complete. So, I do want to encourage everyone to do that, and I think we've had, we have about 55 trustees, and trustee Frazier is the first student to enroll. I also want to thank staff, particularly Dr. Olivo, who worked with the Asian-American advisory group. We did our first outreach for the first-year pathway students, and I understand we had well over 100 students attend and their families. It was very well received and really a great outreach to the community, and the community was very impressed, and now everyone's lined up and wants to come to PCC, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
No report.
Mr. Martin?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. And I have nothing this evening. Item number S is future of board meetings. Any questions about that? We have a retreat on, I think it's Saturday, isn't it? It's not Friday?
Friday.
It's a Friday.
Friday? Friday, the 10th? Okay, 9:00 AM?
Do we have a place?
Do we have a place?
Not yet.
On the quad?
I need to consult, I need to consult with the new president.
Okay.
Is there any one here?
We have to have that on the 10th? I just, thinking out loud here, I may well have a business conflict.
That date has been there for some time.
I thought we typically did these on a Saturday. Some of us, you know, have day jobs.
Well, again, I'm at your disposal. That, that was the date.
Okay, we'll talk about, I, I always thought they were Saturday.
I thought so, too.
I just request that if we do change it from January 10th, that it, it's afterwards, it'd be a weekend, because my classes will be starting.
We'll try to look at the 11th.
Okay, I have, I have another all-day retreat on the 11th, and it was actually, I consulted with Dr. Rocha on this date before I scheduled it. It would be extremely difficult for me to miss it after, after having scheduled around this. So, if we don't do the 10th, I would hope that we wouldn't do the 11th.
We will consult, and we will come to an agreeable.
Okay, find a agreeable solution, but the 11th is not agreeable.
Okay. Future agenda items. Okay, we'll now move into closed session. It has always been my habit, and as a councilman and water board director, to always call on the attorney to give us a briefing of what we're going to be doing.
The agenda items are Government Code Section 54957.6, collective bargaining, designated negotiator, general counsel, me. Government Code Section 54956.9A, conference with counsel regarding pending litigation, and Government Code Section 54957, public employee appointments, trio program coordinator, mass science upward bound, director of technical services, information technology.
Thank you very much. The trustees will now go into closed session, and for those of you who are not staying, happy holidays to all of you.